I would now call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM here at McAdavick Place, St. George. Good evening and welcome to the September 2025 Regular Council Meeting for the Eastern Charlotte Council. Tonight, all of councilors here except for Councilor Lee is a family emergency. Councilor Hat is here by phone, so there may be times I may have to ask him his vote because I can't see his hand. I welcome all those who are attending tonight and those who are watching on the television or cellphone or the computers. Dawson Hat is doing the camera tonight, so thank you very much for doing this tonight, Dawson. Florence Mitchell's in the back doing the switching. And of course, their star, Vicky Hogarth, is here tonight. Chris McKinnon, our Assistant Clerk, is taking notes. And our CEO, Jason Giddet, is here too. Happy birthday to Councilor Ted today. A big, big, big applause for Councilor Ted here. And congratulations on your wedding on Labor Day weekend as well, too. So it's a big... Each year, September the 30th marks the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. The day honors the children who never returned home and survivors of the 139 Indian residential schools in Canada, as well as their families and communities. To honor that day tonight and again on September 30th, I wear an orange shirt. The orange color represents truth-telling and healing. Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of the tragic legacy of residential schools, the missing children of First Nations, Inuit, and Métis, the families left behind, and the survivors of these institutions. Every child matters. Tonight, I'll be looking to counsel and looking for a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting of September the 17th, which is tonight. I need a motion for that. Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor McQuarrie. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Councilor Hat, you said aye as well. Gotcha. Thank you. Conflict of interest, this is your opportunity to declare a conflict of interest. If there's none tonight, I'll go to number four, the adoptions of the minutes of previous council meetings. Councilor Ted, you had a motion here tonight, I think?
I move to approve the minutes that circulate to members of council for August 20th Regular Meeting of Council and September 2nd Committee of the Whole.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilor Ted. I need a secondary for that. Deputy Mayor, question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrare, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to business arising of the minutes. There are none tonight, and so that moves us right up to delegations, and we have the RCMP here tonight. So I was going to ask you folks to come right up. It's good to have you at the beginning of the meeting, so you can get back to work.
Thank you, your worship, councilors. Thank you for taking the time to have us here tonight. Appreciate that. Before I get started, I just wanted to do a brief introduction. We brought Corporal Remy LeBlanc. Corporal LeBlanc is newly promoted into St. George in a team leader role, and you may recognize his face because he was here previously as a constable, but I won't. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hey, good evening. Corporal Remy LeBlanc. Recognize quite a few faces here. Jason, your worship. Worked here previously, five and a half years. Had a two-year stint away in Grand Bay Westfield, but I'm happy to be back. Jason, I know you got my email. If there's anything, you guys let me know. I'd be happy to help out. I'm really happy to be back in the community. I'm very familiar with it, and I think it's a good change, so.
Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to make him do a 15-minute speech, but... So I did bring the, our quarter one report, and I do apologize for them being late, but they are literally hot off the presses. So I'll get into that in a second here. I just want to go over a few things that we've been up to and some issues and things we've been dealing with. Over the summer, I guess, so I'll speak basically from the first quarter, April 1st, up until now. We've had quite a bit of community engagement through RC-10 and our communities, and I think, and we've gotten some good feedback. So we had good involvement at Canada Day. Most communities, we were able to assist, so from Campobello right through to Blacks Harbor and St. Andrews and here in St. George. And we also, quite busy in the summer, helping with some events, some of which were in Fundy Shores, but the Sandcastle Competition, Fundy Shores Days and things like that. So I just wanted to get the message out as well, and you folks have been good about it. If you have an event that you would like us to attend or assist with or just be there for a presence, just give us a little bit of notice, and we'll do our best to accommodate. So as I told Fundy Shores last week, we're doing our best to identify those events ahead of time and bring people in on overtime, and so they're not called the way to call, so they can participate fully. So it's, you know, it is on overtime, but it's money well-spent, I think, for that community engagement piece of things. And we also had a very successful, we called it Cram the Cruiser, but it's Cops for Classrooms is what it was called, so across West District. So it was kind of the brainchild of our acting district commander, Inspector Mike Berry. So instead of, we generally, around Christmas time, will do the Cram the Cruiser to assist the food banks. This one was for kids going back to school, elementary school age primarily. So we did an event in St. Stephen and St. George, and there was also one in St. Andrews, and it was kind of spearheaded and organized by our community policing officer, Lisa Williams, and assisted by us. But I just want to, you know, recognize the outpouring of support, financial and supplies that we got from people within Charlotte County. So we were overwhelmed by it. So very positive impact. We hit up all the elementary schools and divvied up the supplies. Lisa did a lot of work on that, so, yeah, it was very well. So we hope that's something we're going to continue year to year. And I know I've touched on it, I think, at our last time I attended and spoke to you folks, but our body worn cameras now are fully rolled out across the district. So Graham and Ann and Macadam were the last two offices to get them, but all the officers in RC-10 wearing them. So I handed out those little cards we have, and if there's any members of the public that are looking for that, we have a stack of those around. But there's a link to it on the card that takes you to our national policy on them. If people have questions, most of them can be answered through that link. But generally, we're finding it very positive so far. It, you know, increases our accountability with the public and, you know, shows what we're doing. And the policy is basically, we turn them on when we go to a call, turn them off when we leave. And if it's required for court, there's a vetting process to remove private information from that. Otherwise, things are just stored in a central database, so very good system. We're very happy with it so far. And so if people see us around, I've already had people ask me, well, I don't want to be recorded. The green light's on. The green light means it's ready. If it's red, it's on. So it has a 30-second buffer prior to be turned on with video only, so that'll show what I was doing in the previous 30 seconds before it was activated. So like I say, a pretty good system, and if you're on YouTube and you watch, like, American police forces seem to put them online pretty quick, it's the same system. It's Axon. It's the same type of technology. Traffic enforcement, we've had quite a number of visits from our traffic enforcement unit that rolls around the province. They're called the Tactical Traffic Enforcement Unit, and they travel, they're a provincial unit that move around throughout the province. They visit us from time to time, and we're very grateful for their work. They do a lot of good work. Traffic enforcement, road safety is one of our priorities, as you well know. And we're also doing traffic enforcement locally as it presents itself. And while I'm on the subject there, I just wanted to touch on the subject of ATV. So it's, as people have probably seen on social media, we did some ATV enforcement in St. Stephen a few weeks ago. Get mixed reviews, I guess, if you want to call it that, but the message we're trying to get out on that is, we're not out to ruin anybody's good time. We're basically trying to prevent serious injuries and fatalities, which we've had a number of in the past two years, and I don't think I have to go around the room too far to talk to people that know somebody that's been personally impacted by that. And it makes it even more tragic when it's youth. And so those are the ones we're trying to get the message out to. We've had, I would say, an extremely serious problem with it in St. Stephen, around the area of the gas stations, Old Ridge, front of the high school, stunting, very dangerous behavior. So we're trying to curtail that. So that's the message that we're trying to get out. It's not to ruin anybody's fun. It's strictly for safety. We're trying to educate these kids, have them do it in a safe manner, and follow the law. That's basically what we're doing. So we're going to continue with that. As everybody knows, it's no secret, we don't chase them. It's not, even some of them try to goad us into chasing them for a game. We don't do that. It's not safe. It's not safe for them. It's not safe for the public. So we're trying alternate approaches to try to tackle this issue. And so again, if anybody has any feedback or ideas as to how we can address this issue in a reasonable manner, we're all ears. Talking about some of our enforcement actions, we're trying to do a better job of getting our positive news stories out there, so, and I'll give full props to CHCO for carrying those quite quickly. We have a number of fairly significant drug seizures in the past month on Graham and Ann and St. Stephen area, and we have a few more releases coming out. And I just want to emphasize the good work that our officers are doing. This is proactive work that's, you know, it's not simply falling into our hands. They're doing the work, and they're getting some drug seizures, and these are probably going to be leading to other things later on, larger drug seizures. So we're going to continue to try to get those messages out to show what we're doing and where we're spending our time. And along that line, I want to point out, and I'm sure, again, it was a good news story. It was back in, down in Pocahog. That was probably four months ago now.
You talked about the U-Haul?
Yeah, yeah. We had an officer out on patrol, late at night, down on the McCarthy's Point Road, noticed a U-Haul truck. And policing's all about what looks right and what looks out of place, you know? So the guy wasn't clearly out moving at 1:00 in the morning. Attempted to stop on the vehicle. Vehicle fled, almost struck the officer. Pursuit was initiated. And anyway, we ended up getting the vehicle and arresting the guy, and he's a prolific property crime offender out of kind of Hampton, Sussex area, once we found out who he was. So in our mind, we probably prevented a number of break-in enters that night just by good police work being out and, you know, checking people that look like they're not supposed to be there. So, yeah, again, not to go on all night about this sort of thing, but we're trying to get those messages out as to what we're doing. And just one more thing I want to touch on. Staffing-wise, at our district level, so I mentioned Inspector Mike Berry, so our superintendent, district commander, Andy LeClaire, retired a few months ago. Inspector Berry's been acting in that position since then. However, a new superintendent's been named, should be probably within a week or two, will be assuming the role, it's Martin Sonnier. You may remember him. He was the inspector previously. I think he attended a few community meetings down here. So we're quite excited to have him back, and I have no doubts he'll want to come out and do the rounds and meet everyone and whatnot, so some good news. And locally, our staffing numbers are trending up. We had a little bit of turnover lately. People have moved on, and we're getting some staffing coming in. So Remy's a good example of that. We're able to fill the corporal position that had been vacant for about a year, and we've got a couple of cadets incoming, one for St. George, who we'll try to bring out to a council meeting to meet, and a new one for St. Andrews as well. So we're, yeah, things are trending the right way in terms of our staffing numbers right now. I believe we only have one hard vacancy right now in our RC-10 in St. Andrews. That's not, that means there's an empty seat with nobody planning to come into it, but other than that, the seats are full or people are coming in, so some pretty good news. So as far as the report, I know I just literally dropped it into your hands. If you have any questions about that, I can definitely try to address them now, or if you, you know, if you want to review it and follow up with us through email or whatnot, that's fine as well. Oh, yes. Well, go ahead.
Okay. Volunteer myself for some work. One thing, too, with schools being back in session, you're going to see visibility of their officers being present, doing traffic enforcement in and around school zones. You'll also see us in the schools updating our safe plan, so that's the, you know, the plan that we have. It's all web-based, where our officers go in, they verify the information with the schools, contact list, layouts, everything that we need. Heaven forbid, you know, I keep saying this today, likelihood low, impact very high if we have an incident in one of our schools. We want to be on the front end of that, so we plan, along with the school district, to ensure that we're best positioned to respond to any emergency events in any of our schools. And in addition to our core responsibilities of public safety, traffic enforcement, talk about community engagement, it starts with our youth. We work both in terms of having our CPO, Lisa Williams, in the school, but our officers also, each school is assigned an officer. I happen to be the officer for Vincent Massey School in St. Andrews, rather. I've got a daughter there, so it's kind of near and dear to my heart. We encourage all of our officers to be visible in the schools, you know, approachable in terms of any issues that might be identified by the staff, but also, you know, the students like to get to know us and realize that every time you see a police officer, it doesn't mean somebody's in trouble. Sometimes it's a good thing. And, you know, we stop in at things like Halloween and say hi and just kind of do talks with the students. So that's one of the other things we're doing in your community and around the area.
Well, I want to thank you guys very much for coming in tonight. I really appreciate it. At this point, I'm just going to go to council, just see if they have any questions for you. No comments? Councilor McQuarrie here first.
Blackheart, I can't see you guys down there. 8:30 and 9:00.
The morning for traffic enforcement?
Oh, yeah. Especially on that ferry, because if they're running late to get into the ferry, that 30 don't mean squat. They come hell through there at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock is an hour, because I sit there every morning to watch them.
The issues, I'll sort of step up. The issues regarding the traffic to and from the ferry, it's been an ongoing issue. We have, in the past, undertaken certain traffic enforcement initiatives, certainly put the word out to our members to be cognizant of that and to kind of keep the pressure on, so to speak. Encourage people in the community, when they see traffic offense taking place, something unsafe, somebody blowing through a crosswalk or something, almost hitting somebody, get the license plate, call it in. We definitely, you know, will respond to those kinds of complaints. Staff Sergeant Peters mentioned our Tactical Traffic Enforcement Unit. We are seeing that there is, everything's sort of stat-based and evidence-based, where there is, you know, a clear record of traffic complaints being called into a certain area about a certain issue. We have no problem sending in the Tactical Traffic Enforcement Unit, and it's kind of a bit of a, kind of a double-edged sword, so to speak, because they are very high-impact. They will write tickets. They will conduct enforcement. The only caveat I put, once they're off the leash, they're off the leash. If mom or sister or somebody gets a ticket, that's the way it works. So, and again, they're a great tool. We've had great feedback. I know your brother mayor, His Worship Cogswell, is very, very appreciative of having them along the way into the nuclear power plant, because they're having similar issues there, right? So by all means, we're aware of that issue, and we'll partner with your community to address it. So please encourage people to call it in, and we'll take that feedback back to our officers and ask them to make a bit of a concerted effort to show the doors in the neighborhood there.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Councilor McKay?
Okay, so just going through this quickly, because I just got it. I'm looking at the differences in the occurrences in the different areas, and I understand that Macadam is a small place and Campobello is a small place and St. Andrews, but there's significant differences. Why? Do you guys have any idea, like, why that is? Is there more of a police presence, or is there less drugs?
Specifically, just the call volume in general?
Yeah, yeah. Well, even property crimes, like, it's, all of them are way down compared to, like, Eastern Charlotte, 574, Fundy Shores, 163, which is also low, but Macadam, 84, and, you know, Campobello, 51. So what's, why?
It's all just, it's a factor of two things. It's people calling things in and reporting them. So if they're not reported, they don't show up here, and it doesn't matter if people put them on Facebook and complain about them, unless they call it in, it's not reported. So that's one thing. And it's, honestly, it's directly tied to population and population density. So higher population density, more people, more crime, and that's just evidenced by our two highest locations, which is St. Stephen and Eastern Charlotte, respectively. And that's what drives that. And I would say, yes, you are correct, it is tied to drug use, and just in those, I mean, in those very rural areas like Fundy Shores and Macadam that have those, you know, the massive, and the rural district itself, you get so many rural areas that, you know, yes, you do have property crime, but I guess proportionally, it looks, you know, it's going to, proportionally, it's the same, I guess. So if you did a proportional comparison to the population and the area that you're policing, it's probably similar. But it's just for Campobello, for example, and that might be a bad example, because, you know, Campobello, I think a lot of things were maybe unreported and dealt with locally, so whereas, you know, in a larger place like St. Stephen or St. George, those are going to be called in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, thank you very much for coming in tonight. I really appreciate it. Great to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to 6B, and we have Fred Stewart from Beaver Harbor Athletic Association.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, Fred. I appreciate it.
Some of you may know me, some of you may not, but I'm the last chair of the Beaver Harbor Athletic, or Beaver Harbor LSD, and I'm currently the chair of the Beaver Harbor Athletic Association, which I've been involved with in 40 or more years. I'm here to request from the council tonight some funding to help reinstate the ball field in Beaver Harbor for use. We've got new families who moved in and new kids and a new generation, and they want to see something done there for a playground for them. For a little history of the Beaver Harbor Ball Diamond, and a lot of people probably don't know this, the land for the ball field was originally donated by the Bates family in 1945 to honor veterans of World War II. So to me, that has a double, a double content to it with that, you know? It's not only just a ball field for kids, it's a memorial field for our veterans. The Beaver Harbor Athletic Association was established and registered in Fredericton on March 1, 1946, to oversee the affairs of the ball field. I can remember watching them when I was younger. And in the 80s, myself and a group of community volunteers refurbished the field with a new backstop, six-foot-high fence all around the field, and the field was used into the 2000s. Then ball kind of dropped off and things faded out. A group of community volunteers wanted to get the field back into a useful field. The field now needs rerouting of water from the field, which is pretty well all done, removal of the brush, which is mostly, it's all been cut, it's just now, it has to be removed, and some of the damaged fencing has to be removed, too. The old field, when we put the field in back in the 80s, we put a six-foot-high fence all the way around it and a new backstop. The new, we're proposing a four-foot-high fence for this now. We remain, the backstop will remain, and about a quarter of the original fence will remain there, so we need fence for about three-quarters of the field, and we want to go with a four-foot-high fence to cut cost. And the estimate for the new four-foot-high fence for about three-quarters of the field, now I just got this from the local hardware store, these prices from the local hardware store, and this is including installation, this is only for material, is $1,840, approximately $1,840, just for the material for it. And I can't remember now the exact footage of it. We're going to do some other changes on the ball field to cut down the cost and cut down on maintenance and everything like that, as well as, I was talking to some of the community members who are doing it, they would like to, this year, try to put in a little skating pond for the kids, first thing this winter and that as well. So we'll take anything we can get, of course, to help do it, and our volunteers are willing, we've got contractors volunteered to help out. We've got local community members with equipment and stuff that are doing a lot of the work, but it's still going to cost a lot, you know, still a lot of finances needed to get through there, and we would appreciate any help that you could give us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred. Just before you leave, I'm just going to turn this over to...
And if there's any questions anybody wants, they can just get ahold of me.
Absolutely. I'm just going to ask councilor, if they have a question before you leave. And I'm going to go to Councilor Ted first.
I just have a question for CAO. Do we still have funds allotted for Ward 6 for this budget year?
Yes, there is, and community grants as well, so, yeah. Thanks.
What we'd like to see, if we can get the funding, is the first thing we want to do, and we'd like to do it this fall if we could, is put a gate on the ball diamond, because our biggest problem with the ball diamond over the years has been vehicles tearing things down and tearing up the field, so. And I notice there's foot, foot and a half-deep ruts in the field right now where the vehicles, trucks, and everything. So that is a project that we want to do. Of course, it's an ongoing thing for the fall, but as far as the fencing goes, that will probably take, that'll probably take place in the spring rather than this time of year because of the leak. But we're planning on having all the debris, bushes, anything that needs to be taken off, we plan on having that done, and so we can start first thing in the spring to get the field ready, whatever it takes. And, but like I say, the first thing we'd like to do is get a gate on there to keep the vehicles off the field, so that's our project, main project for this year. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much for coming in tonight, Fred. I guess, do you have something, Councilor Ted?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we send the request to the Finance Committee for valuation for the amount of $1,840.
You say you want to send it to the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And I need a secondary for that. Councilor McKay, I guess, I saw first. I saw all kinds of hands, but you're the first one. Okay, question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Councilor Hat? You said aye. All right, great, thank you. That's, yes, unanimous. Great, and we'll move on to department reports, and I'm going to go to the 7A, which is the General Government Report, and their CAO, Jason Giddet.
Thank you, your worship. General Government Report for the month of August, Water and Wastewater. Unglobe is working on three projects relating to Blacks Harbor water. The first is the IBA Water Source Development Project. Then they're also working on the Phase 2 Water Project for looking at transmission lines and the ongoing system. And then they're also working on a Goody groundwater project for the current Blacks Harbor water source wells. We are preparing a meeting with Clean Harbors and Glenn Porter, who's assisting on that project for the Blacks Harbor Lagoon Cleanup. And I believe we're meeting with them actually next week. CBCL is working on the IBA project for water and wastewater projects in St. George. They are currently reviewing industrial volumes and wastewater testing on industrial waste and reviewing volume estimates of industry and possible new developments for the new development area of Exit 56, so they're working in conjunction with looking at that area. CBCL will also update digital mapping of water valves for homes in St. George and Blacks Harbor. We did receive a number of calls with residents in both communities, just wondering what our crews are doing, but we are looking for the shut-off valves and mapping those, so they'll be put in digitally into a mapping system. We continue to ask users in both Blacks Harbor and St. George Water Systems to practice water conservation due to the ongoing drought. Certainly, it's an ongoing concern. I know the wildfire issue has died down, but we still remain in a drought state, so just asking people to avoid watering their lawns or plants and, you know, washing their cars. How's any development? We're certainly pleased to welcome, and I guess here tonight, is Lori Kelly, the new Eastern Charlotte team member for the Project Coordinator in Economic Development, and Lori, maybe just stand up and do a big wave. Thank you, Lori, for joining the team. Lori been meeting with developers with pending housing projects. She's done a lot of that already, as well as several landowners who oppose some interest in developing their properties as well. And I think just recently, just met with the Service Commission staff there this week, too. Childcare, the Murdoch Boyd is finalizing construction plans, awaiting meeting with the province and the YMCA on financial support based on the early estimates. Chatting with the province to ensure that the funding is still there, and the provinces is willing to, and the feds are willing to offer the financial support for that project. Public Works is still waiting paving for Granite Street. We are on the schedule for that in the southern portion. portion of Campbell Hill Road and the Brunswick Street Upper Bridge Elementary School Section in St. George. Also, a number of different cuts. I know people in Hillside Subdivision, the dip that's been in there for a while, we'll be addressing that. And also, the repair work that was done on Clinch Street. The Public Works Building in Black Harbor is moving into electrical work, and that's ongoing. Plans are to move the Black Harbor team there by the start of the winter season. Replacement Vehicles are quoted as part of the 2025 capital investment. I believe that's on agenda for later tonight. Repair upgrades to the sewage line on Clinch Street has been scheduled for first of September, and that has been completed. And repairs are scheduled for the two to three storm drain drops on the Main Street Road in Black Harbor. So many people in Black Harbor know there's a few different storm drains, storm grates that have really dropped down. We'll be repairing those as well. Parks and Recreation, finalizing work at Riverside Park with the unofficial opening date set for September the 28th. And that's certainly a big event, event that's going to be happening down there, so we invite everyone to come down. Staff will be putting in the ice at the arena for the second week of September. That's ongoing now. And kudos to the staff down there that's just really focused on putting in a good ice sheet this year. Repairs have been made to the walkway plaza around the post office in St. George. And despite these repairs, the plaza does need significant work. We have just awaiting a report back from Smet Monuments in regards to the, the memorial at the front of the post office. Anyone that's been around the post office knows that that's showing large gaps and some movement. So Smet Monuments will be advising us. We hope to then have the courts lined, I'm sorry, still waiting the fencing company for the plate courts in Black Harbor. They have been on site in the last couple of days, and we'll have those courts lined and set up for a new playground. So we'll be going through the, once we find, determine the play area for that playground. We'll be looking at installing some, some of the returned pieces of equipment, but also some new fixtures for the playground in Black Harbor. We will need to review the Christmas Tree Site in St. George. The former hardwood tree is pending a report from a herbiculturist. I keep struggling with that. A tree expert, and the tree has, has been really going through some difficult times in the last few years. We did advise them to, you know, if there's any dead limbs, to remove those immediately. So we'll be doing some of that. But we do have to sort of look at that tree for the future and make sure that it's a safe area. Fire in September, the tender goes out for the new pumper. I believe that's just finalized now, just waiting to be issued. The new fire truck pumper for the Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue. Looking at a mobile pump trailer as well, and that's something that will be tow, it's a tow behind pump trailer that will assist in pumping for lakes and brooks and stuff. For much of the month of August, we are under significant fire watch and fire prevention directive from the province. Thankfully, that has, has pretty much ceased. The increase in medical calls continue to be reviewed, and I believe we're meeting with staff and members of council, meeting with ambulance New Brunswick this week to discuss those dangerous and unsightly properties. Two demolition orders have been completed, so we did demolish those two, those two files. We do have several files that are still pending, and will be coming to council fairly soon. I certainly believe they'll probably be coming at the October meeting. There's at least two more that we have to, we have to clean up. Those properties, one is a back bay, and the other one's in Lake Utopia. Finance and HR, finance is working on completing the year end, in the year end projections, and then we move into the budget. We're starting to slowly get some information in for the budget 2026, so we'll be eagerly moving into that fairly quickly. And that is the general government report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jason. Any questions or comments on that? Councillor Dedra, I guess you're first.
I think I have some questions. So regarding the Christmas tree at the post office, which is a central part of St. George, so have we reached out to an arborist yet, or are we still waiting on that?
We have had the Coburn, I guess, father and son, they're, that's what they do. They are looking at it. And we were on site the other day, and we did advise them before they got back to us on any type of report, to get rid of at least the dead limbs that are there. There's several dead limbs that are, you know, if they were to fall, they're, you know, could damage or hurt somebody, so.
But they're going to also assess whether or not the tree is in fact dying-
Right.
-or not. And then, and then I presume, what would be the next course of action?
Well, if it's dead, unfortunately, there's not much you can do to bring it back.
You'd have to remove it, yeah.
You know, so on first look, his recommendations were to remove some of the dead limbs and then, and then really take a look at it and see how the tree handles that, because it is carrying a lot of extra load. You know, we still have concerns with putting lights on it and, you know, getting box, getting any types of lifts in around that area. But we'll just wait to see what he has to say. And if it comes back that, you know, the tree is, you know, we're going to monitor it for the next couple of years, you know, that may be the case. I mean, that whole area, as I mentioned, with the, you know, the warm memorial, the whole area is really, it's, it's significant, it's really, it's coming up for a need for some much-needed attention. And we did repair a lot of that walkway around the post office. It was almost like an ankle breaker with the old pieces of granite that were there, and it's been cleaned up. But, you know, with the tree and with the monument, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, some things may look a little bit different in the next, next couple of years there.
Okay. And my other question is, with the, there were some housing projects in Black Harbor. The organization was, used to be Project Village. Now, I'm not sure what is it called?
Project Village.
Is it still Project Village? Has there been any progress on that?
Not a lot of progress. There's still pending CMHC type of responses, you know, and Lori has been down to visit with them. And, you know, starting in October, she'll start providing a report to council. She's had a very good in-depth conversation with them and to see where they're at. And certainly, if it's, if it's outside of what, anything more they can do, I guess our next step is, is maybe making a visit to either to the minister with housing for the province, do some lobbying more as well to, you know, maybe make some lobbying to CMHC on their behalf as well. I think it's been a long time. I think maybe, you know, a road trip to Fredericton might be, might be needed at this point. Both of those projects are very important for housing, just in general. We have lost inventory with some fires just, just this year that we've not replaced with some, especially some of the lower-income housing. So it's really, housing is certainly an important piece with us. So I think a day trip up to Fredericton and, and meeting with some of these powers that be that push these files through, if that's where they're held up at.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jason? If not, we move on to the Southwest New Budget Service Commission. The August, the, the regular board meeting, August the 28th, 2025, business arising from the previous meeting. Mayor Matthews, at that meeting, moved the revision motion number 25-29, transfer of $1,357,000 from capital reserves to operating for the purchase of a landfill compactor to be $1,230,574.47 to make the amount reflective of the purchase price net of HST rebate. That was seconded by Jim Tubbs during that meeting. New business was moved to give notice of the vote of, of October the 23rd, 2025, to approve the 2026 budget and distribute a copy of the proposed budget to its members that are, that are local government and to the minister in accordance with section 28.1 of the Regional Service Delivery Act, and that was seconded by Mayor Matthews. Staff report, it was moved that the SNBSC opt out of CRINS, which is, I know a lot of people say the letters, which means Canadian Radio Communications Information Notification Service. And we, the motion was to notify CRINS of the, of the decision and appoint PrAC to serve as a designated land use authority to provide letters of concurrence with industry Canada and adopt the proposed antenna sighting protocol. And that was seconded and carried. The tourism position last month was eliminated. The new app, the map of the, a new app, the map of the building and development permits are up on the Service Commission site and can be linked to the municipality site. And that's, and I'll go to, go to Alex.
Thank you, your worship and council. Yeah, regarding that map, so that's a, that's a map that sort of tracks where developments occurring in Eastern Charlotte and across the region. So it's a map with showing all the building permits, subdivisions. It's the, the key public information that's relevant to track Eastern Charlotte's development and progress. And actually, yeah, I met with Lori, and we looked at that. And there's all kinds of things we can provide her and her position to advance the agenda of development, especially with mapping. PrAC has an application for private access. This is the rezoning council just did recently for Poor Hale House Road. That's, that's that five-lot business park development. So that's going to committee tomorrow. Last month, the planning committee approved a private access for a building lot off Woodbury Cove in Utopia. PrAC also provided advice to council regarding a agenda item on your agenda tonight regarding the Carlton Street Extension. So that's that new street next to the cemetery. As a next step, council made a move to give assent and approve that public streets extension. The planning committee tabled an application last month by Alexander Wilkins to develop two new additional dwellings at 120 Mount Pleasant Road. They just need to obtain a little bit more information on the proposed farm development and the rationale for having the additional homes. But that's, that rationale was provided by the applicant, and now it's going back tomorrow night. Development update, sixty-nine building permits and development permits issued year-to-date, nine new permits in the last month. Your total construction value year-to-date is close to six million. Thirteen tentative subdivision plans have been improved with two new in the last month, and that added two new building lots. There's no new zoning confirmation letters or new dwellings recorded in last month, but there was one new variance that was approved by a development officer. It's a minor frontage variance for a new building lot in Black Harbor. In terms of enforcement, eleven new files have been opened last month, and there's been thirty-seven year-to-date. So these are enforcements under the Community Planning Act bylaws, Rural Plans, Zoning Bylaws, Building Code Administration Act, or your Dangerous Unsightly Bylaw. That concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Good. I'll go to, I'll go to council at this point. All right, councillor Thompson, you're first.
Alex, sometime in the near future, could you come to council? And you showed some of us a presentation probably a year ago, or maybe a little less, probably ten months, about the comprehensive planning on your new subdivision designs. Could you come to council and show that to everybody, so everybody understands how they should be laid out?
So if I understand correct, you mean what a comprehensive plan is?
Yes. You have fresh drawings and how the water line should be on one side of the street and your sidewalks on the opposite side.
Oh, yes, I see what you mean. So this is the idea of, if you updated your subdivision bylaw standards, what would it look like if you kind of, you know, narrowed up the road but provided some other amenities, like the, the street trees or-
Right.
-multi-use shared path? Yeah, that kind of concept is definitely doable. One thing would be good to look at it as part of your, your rural plan or municipal plan, comprehensive plan that you're talking about, because there could be different alterations for Eastern Charlotte that would suit, you know, the, the culture here, the, you know, local geography and so on. So, yeah, we could definitely talk about that. I think it would be a really interesting conversation when it comes time to do that comprehensive plan.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, for sure.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for coming in tonight.
All right.
Take it easy going home. It's getting dark now. At this point, I'll go to the fire report, and councillor Thompson.
For the month of August 2025, Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue had thirteen fire calls, two public hazard calls, six mutual aid calls, fourteen false alarms, three training events, and thirty-two medical calls, for a total of seventy-nine. Like to thank all the members for their help with Fog Fest. Thank you.
Questions or comments on that report? September is, I believe, and John, maybe you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, and this is, September is firefighter appreciation month in Canada? That's correct. Okay, great. And I want to recognize John Calder here tonight, and I think Dexter Hanley's here from the fire department here tonight, too. The commitment of these men and women on the Eastern Charlotte Fire Department extends far, far beyond the call of duty, benefiting not only Eastern Charlotte but all of Charlotte County. While we enjoy the safety of our homes, they, they risk their lives to provide critical assistance to those who require it. Throughout the year, they provide round-the-clock 365 days of the year support, offering aid whenever we need it the most. They dedicate extensive time to training, studying, and taking exams to expand their expertise and offer truly professional service with a commitment to their duty. Their quick response times are truly inspiring. I would also like to express gratitude to the families of our members who make sacrifices and take on additional responsibilities at home when their loved ones are engaged in the community service. On behalf of the community, I truly thank you for your support and understanding. Behind every firefighter is a family that shares in their commitment. Again, thank you for sharing your loved ones with us. We are truly grateful. And I also want to express my sincere appreciation of our firefighters' courage in facing dangerous situations. They run towards danger when others are running away and put their lives, and they put their lives on the line to protect others. Eastern Charlotte residents are indeed fortunate to have these dedicated women and men at their ready whenever needed. We are all safer because of their service. A simple thank you hardly, hardly suffices, but we hope you know how much we appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you for your service, each and every one of you. I'll give a round of applause for Eastern Charlotte Fire and Rescue. At this point, I'll go to the, the Public Works Report, and councillor McCrory.
Black Harbor, they've been, they flushed the water after they cleaned the tower. They've, that's all been completed there, and samples were taken up, and everything was okay. The ball field was scraped and rolled. They put a new backflow water valve at Pond One. They're doing their, continuing to do locates for CBLC. Curb stops that are located will be applied to our electronic mapping. They're fixing equipment as it breaks down. Cabota Lawnmower, utility trailer, three-ton truck, trackless, conno van, wow, that's a hopeless cause, that thing. And the one-ton. They painted all the fire hydrants. The new building has been framed, and walls are up, and I think ceiling is done now, too, isn't it? They put the roof on it? They're just waiting for the door now. Eh?
Just insulation and door.
Yeah. And I want to thank the boys and blacks for helping out on the weekend there for the Fog Fest. They set up the tables and cleaned up the garbage and made it usable for everybody. St. George, oh, Black Harbor's also been doing some potholing, too. So, mind you, that's, everybody does that. Black, or St. George is doing some, too. Washed out section of the portage boat ramp, had to be filled in with gravel and top coated with reclaim. Hopefully, that'll hold up until spring. They set up a large tent at the high school for the Marine Mark.
Yep.
Mariner Alumni Festival. Fence around the generator, if you notice, when you come in, that's all up. And they put the fence up into the arena down the back of the, for the, what do they call that thing? That park. Yeah, Riverside Park, whatever they call it. And they've all been doing their water tests, both off, both departments, so. See, I suck at doing that stuff. Anyways, that's about it.
Good. I got to go, Jason, just to elaborate a little bit more on that.
Just, I just, I guess one other thing with Black Harbor, I know councillor Hat has asked this a number of times, just with the fire hydrant on Wellington Road, it's scheduled to be repaired. And I was just asking about that just recently this week, and it's just been back, backdated a few times by the, by the repair people. But that is going to be addressed for, for Black Harbor. So I know that may be a question that may come up.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Dedra, I guess you're next.
Yeah, I have a question for CAO. So in the public reports, for public works, report for St. George, Ron Group mentions, again, for like, this is probably the fourth time, concerns about the water levels at our wells. He mentions how we need to find a way to get water from the lake into the marsh. The water table can be back to normal. What are we doing about this?
So we will be starting conversations with CBCL. We've been a long time coming, especially with some of our capital investments with water and sewage, especially the renewal of some pipelines in St. George, too, that needs to get back on, some updates of sewage flow stations, and as well with the wells four and five. So it's something that we, we've gone to that a couple of times, as you've mentioned, not just even with these reports last four months, but it's been an ongoing situation. If you go all the way back to even 2019, as the town of St. George, this has been an issue or concern, just that how long can those wells continue with, with the marsh that's disappearing? So, so we will be talking with CBCL, bringing them up to date on that project, just that project alone. It's not going to be confused with anything else.
Yeah.
Just because of the, the priority with it. It is coming into- It is coming into conversation now, but we're, it's going to be a, an individual project number, but it is coming into conversation as we look at the total St. George water, what we're forecasting that may be needed with new development, but also exit fifty-six. They, they have a fair, good understanding of if everything was developed at exit fifty-six, how much water is needed and how much water we have today. So looking at each one of those wells is part of that process, too. So, so that has come up in conversations, but it is going to be sidetracked to a project in, into itself and not like an IBA project, but just to look at it. I think there's some things that can be immediately done, or not, I shouldn't say immediately done, but, but probably in a quicker timeline, and that is addressing the sandbar that is kind of dried out and not allowing the water from Lake Utopia into the marsh. I think that's probably a quicker fix than maybe doing channeling or anything like that, but that will, that will come up within the, the project needs.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the Parks and Recreation Report and the, we all have that in front of us. There's, Parks and Recreation is a separate department now. It used to be just Public Works would take care of everything, but now we, it's such a big area and lots of things for these guys to be doing. They work at the Eastern Charlotte Recreation Complex in summer, they, they work at Canal Beach, all the ball fields, the splash pad, Riverside, Riverside Park, all the playgrounds, the community gardens, and of course, all the events going on and the festivities and stuff. At the Eastern Charlotte Recreational Complex, there's been a lot of painting going on. Simcoe, Simcoe has completed the reseal of the condenser, condenser tower, install, installed new infrared camera over the ice surface. The new puck boards, the ads have been installed. Paving for the basketball ball hockey courts are completed and the fencing as of today, I think most of it is, about ninety-nine percent of it was, was done today. Peastone for the playground portion is being put in. New basketball nets ordered and acquiring prices for playground equipment. Wi-Fi boosters installed at the arena and cameras quoted, quoted for streaming the ice surface live. Repairs to the lighting over the ice surface, the Zamboni had its off-season service done by Saunders Equipment. The paint for the ice has been already ordered. The Film Fest was there in August and startup schedule is for September the second, so the arena, actually, I think it's scheduled to be open next week, I believe, for, for hockey, so it's coming pretty fast. Canal Beach, there's a lot of work being, was being done on there. I'm not going to get into every detail, but just to let people know that, that department works on a lot of areas of Eastern Charlotte and they do a lot of work in each one of those areas and they're, they're very, very busy. So I'm going to turn this over to council. Any questions or comments on that report? Yeah, go ahead.
So any maintenance that's done on our trails, for example, along the River Trail, is that something that's done by Parks and Recreation or is that done by Public Works?
It's, it's really both, I guess, depending on the capacity of, like right now, for example, there was something, like a tree fell on the trail. Obviously, the guys are putting the ice in and there's a few tournaments with baseball, so, you know, St. George Public Works would assist. So it's really comes down to just good communication between the foreman on what they can do and, you know, if, if they have guys that are on vacation. But, you know, so far, it's been sort of a, a, I guess, a cooperative effort.
Okay.
In the future, more and more of that will move under Parks and Recreation because it is deemed Parks and Recreation, yeah.
Yeah, I gotta say, these guys have a lot, the ball fields, for example, this past summer, Councilor Thompson, you spent a lot of time in the ball fields, these guys did an excellent job, I would say. The fields always look good, not as good as the Blue Jays field, but, but really, a really good job. That's right. But I could say, but they did exceptionally job. Every, every time he went out to a ballgame, the, the fields really looked good. I know the one in Blacks Harbor got used a lot down there and it always looked good. Did, you have, you have something else to say?
I guess just one other quick thing, Worship, just with the, the Eastern Charlotte Recreation Complex, I know it just, last week, Counselor Hat and I were, were there and just looking at with the, the progress of that, that, that ongoing project. There's been a lot of money that has been put into the arena and, and we still have a, a good season up ahead where there's more funding that's going to, more of that funding is going to, is going to flow to the arena with job down there. And even with the new canteen tenants, the amount of attention that's been put into that has been, has been great, too. So I think, you know, people should, should be pretty happy with the building, especially coming into the season.
Yeah. So when the, the arena opens up next week, people, people are going to be quite happy to see the, the middle of the ice, the, the new Eastern Charlotte logo is going to be on the middle of the ice. And so next week, I think the twenty-second is when the, the arena, arena, arena will open. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Hat, where? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it'll be first gates on, on Monday.
The twenty, the twenty-second, right, exactly. Yeah. Good. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Councilor Dedarakas.
I feel, so this is on behalf of the Age Friendly Committee. So just an, an update of what we, what we've been doing. So first on the docket, so age-friendly community designation, we are pleased to announce that Eastern Charlotte has officially received their designation as an age-friendly community. In recognition of this achievement, a ceremony will be held on October fifteenth at 2:00 p.m. at the McAdavis Place. This is a significant milestone that reflects our ongoing commitment to fostering an inclusive and supportive environment for residents of all ages. Next is public washroom signage. So in an, in an effort to improve accessibility and public awareness, street-facing signs for public washrooms have been installed at the McAdavis Place. Special thanks are extended to Jason and Public Works for, for carrying out this initiative. Envelope for Life Initiative, this is one of the projects that we're really trying to push. It's our, our action plan related to the Envelope for Life has been, has made substantial progress, raising approximately three thousand dollars to date. We're actively pursuing donations from several additional sources to fund the remaining twenty-five hundred dollars needed to fulfill our objectives. Engagements with local partners and stakeholders continue to drive momentum around this project. We've reached out to different organizations in the community such as The Hub. We met with the EC Fire Club recently to present the Envelope for Life Initiative. The club responded positively and is open to providing financial support. To formalize this letter, to formalize this, a letter has been sent out outlining our request for a donation. We've reached out to our MLA, Ian Lee, for a donation in support of a quarterly bulletin delivered by volunteers to seniors and shut-ins. In addition, we plan to request a face-to-face meeting in the near future to discuss future avenues for support and potential collaboration on community programs. And that concludes that report. Then I have another report.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor.
This is for the Beautification Committee. This is all in everyone's folders. So at the last meeting that we had, which was on September eighth, the minutes, by the way, were prepared by Jorina Petrovich, that wasn't indicated in the notes, in the minutes. We discussed long-term versus short-term ideas, strategies that we could, we could implement here in St. George. So for example, we talked about the post office, and that's something that, you know, our CAO mentioned that, that definitely needs some attention. And in terms of like short-term, I know as a council, we've discussed this, this is mentioned by the Beautification Committee and it's something that perhaps the, the council could reinforce again. We need to replace some lights along the River Trail. There are four lights that are out and there are some lights that are out along the McAdavis Place as well. So if we can get that replaced and just have like adequate lighting in the parking lot, that would be, that would be great. So we're also going to be looking at possible projects for council to consider for the twenty-twenty-six year, and that way, if council chooses to do something with it, we can, we can budget, budget it accordingly. So that concludes my reports.
Question or comment on that? No? Okay, now we'll move, move ahead. Thank you very much, Councilor Dedarakas. Eight is the financial statement. I need a motion to accept the financial, financial reports for August twenty-twenty-five. I need a motion by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? All those, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, contrary, and that's passing unanimously. Great, thank you. I keep forgetting Counselor Hat's here. It's going to take me a month to get used to. Nine, old business, draft bylaw EC dash fifteen, I'm looking for a motion to accept the third and final reading by title only of bylaw number EC dash fifteen, the mayor oil SNBSC reporting. I need, oh, I got, are you going to go, Jason first?
Thank you, Worship. So this is bylaw EC dash one-five, bylaw respecting mayoral, mayoral reporting and communication of Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. This will be a third and final reading. First reading was done last meeting, second reading was done last meeting, and copies made to the public as in full, so we'd just be looking for a third and final reading enactment.
I need a motion. Councilor Dedarakas, seconded by Counselor McKay. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, contrary, and that's passing unanimously. Counselor Hat, I think you, I forgot your vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, gotcha, thank you. Ten is new business, capital funds allocation. I'm going to go to Jason on this to, to talk about it.
Thank, thank you, Worship. So as mentioned in a number of reports, both this month and last month, just the need for the purchase or acquisition of some new vehicles within Public Works and Parks and Recreation. We have a number of, of vehicles that are really at the end of their life or have been at their end of life for a while. You know, in that is, is the Connell van in Blacks Harbor. It will not pass the next inspection. We also have a significant need with Parks and Recreation as that, as that department has grown, having a single cab truck for, for three, for three men and a summer student, it doesn't really work. But there is a need to take that truck and replace the Connell van in Blacks Harbor. Certainly within Eastern Charlotte Fire and Rescue, the four-six-nine, which is one of the main lead vehicles, especially when it comes to the medical calls out of St. George, that is getting, getting aging, but there's a need to, to sort of transfer that truck into the, somewhere else in the fleet because we do have a, a sort of a, an admin command truck, a support truck in Blacks Harbor that's at the end of its life. So that would be for a, excuse me, for a F-two-fifty. And then, and then lastly, in St. George, we have a three-quarter ton that's, I, I guess it's, it's really been well, it's been, it's, it's been healed a number of times and body worked and, and that is at the end of its life for sure as well. The thought is there that we'd be putting more of a two-ton in its place, and we do have a one-ton that's going to be coming out of, out of that and likely making its way to Blacks Harbor. So we do have the ability now as well of moving some assets around, especially those assets that, that there's nothing owing within the given Public Works area. So right now, there is a need for three vehicles, an F-one-fifty type vehicle, an F-two-fifty vehicle, both of those being crew cab, and a two-ton F-five-fifty. We've done, I know a number of counselors have been parts of some meetings and, and looked for quotations, and they're all sort of coming in around the same for, for those type of trucks. Taxes, pre-taxes of two-hundred-seventy-four thousand and with taxes with our municipal tax, it's a two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. Plus, if we're looking at with lettering and, and lights and, and any type of additional accessories, I guess the request would be from council to have a, the use of the capital assets in, in the tune of three-hundred-thousand dollars for the capital assets funding.
Okay. This is just for discussions, are there any questions or comments on that? Councilor Dedarakas, you're first.
It's, because we don't have the numbers in front of us, so you said it's about two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand for three vehicles.
That's correct, yes.
And, okay, so do we have a break? You'll, you'll eventually send to us a breakdown of what each of those cost.
Correct, right.
And in terms of the capital fund allocation, this is my question. What, what is, is it, does everyone contribute to this fund or is this, is this just renamed from the St. George Capital Fund?
Uh, no. So in the last budget, it's about five-hundred-and-eighteen, five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars that's in, in that capital asset area. And I believe two-hundred-thousand of that was St. George alone.
Yeah.
Which would, we'd be looking at to partially fund that, the Public Works truck. And, and then there's also the other three-hundred plus that's from Eastern Charlotte itself, so that's why the fire and the Parks and Rec truck, so both of those would, would be using those, those, those funds.
Perfect. And I guess one other question, because I was looking through the, through the budget notes, so there's, we have the Capital Reserve Fund for St. George, it's about eighty, eighty-four thousand dollars. Is that something that would be used towards a project like this or what would you use something like that for?
We, we could, but that, with, if there's money that's already in the reserve, it's already there, it doesn't need to be touched. I guess if, if we don't utilize the capital assets, it does get rolled into a surplus that we don't see in, for two more years. You know, it could help the budget of twenty-twenty-seven to have a, have a surplus. However, I guess, you know, as I mentioned, the need is, is now. We do have a couple of vehicles that, especially the Connell van in Blacks Harbor just needs to go.
I understand, yeah.
So, you know, so really, that's, that's, I guess we're financially in a good place that we can, we don't have to worry about borrowing for, for these type of assets. There is, there is money that's there. So, yeah.
Okay, so translation is we, we're not going to be touching this?
Right.
We have our, we have a collective fund from all of Eastern Charlotte for these, for these vehicles. Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'm going to move on to ten B, the St. George Cemetery Board Subdivision Plan. Jason, did you want to speak on this at first?
Sure. So this is, this would be looking for an assent from council, and I guess maybe, I don't know if Alex is maybe headed off there, but, so we'd be looking at the extension of Carlton Street with lands that we will be acquiring for subdivision from the, the St. George Cemetery Board. So that would be the extension of, of Carlton Street. Just gonna look here. And, just one moment. So just really with the recommendation from this Prac report does show that it's recommended by the Prac Advisory Committee for the recommendation of the location of the new public street for the Eastern Charlotte, for their ascent as shown in the St. George Cemetery Board subdivision. So that is, if you go to the page in your council report, you do see that road extension. This is part of really, I guess, a phase-two, phase-three housing project that's attached to the, the Hillside Housing Development, which we previously passed for, for housing. And so this would take that, take that Carlton extension and direct it out towards that way so that eventually it will loop back with Hillside. So we have worked with the Cemetery Board and they certainly are on board with this. There is no money exchanged, this is just us clearing lands that would be adjacent to this, this new road for them to use for future use of the cemetery. So it's, there'd be no cash, just really just the, the price of paying for clearing lands that we're going to have to clear anyways, so. So we'd be looking for just a motion for, from council to assent to the extension of Carlton Street as per the subdivision plan.
Okay, I'll look to council for a motion if so. I don't see any motion. Oh, Councilor Dedarakas, I have a, you go ahead and read that.
Be resolved that the Council of Eastern Charlotte gives its asset to subdivision plan named St. George Cemetery Board subdivision plan as presented to council, and that council gives leave to the clerk to apply the corporate seal of Eastern Charlotte and sign the face of this subdivision plan on behalf of council.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilor Dedarakas. I need a second or Counselor Ted? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's aye, okay. I'm hearing voices. Excellent. Okay, that bring, okay, gotcha. Thank you, Counselor Hat. Okay, ten C is proclamation, dyslexia awareness month. Municipality of Eastern Charlotte, a proclamation, whereas dyslexia is a lifetime neurodevelopment disorder that impedes the ability to use skills such as reading, spelling, and speaking, and dyslexia can affect children, youth, and adults from all ethnic, social, and economic backgrounds. And whereas dyslexia and other learning disabilities, if not identified, may increase the risk that a person without the appropriate supports will experience educational, mental health, and employment challenges. And whereas with proper diagnosis, instructions, and support, individuals with dyslexia can gain full and meaningful access to education, community, and the workforce. And whereas the government of New Brunswick promotes an inclusive education system in which students with disabilities and diverse abilities are fully participating members of a community of learners, and in which all students are entitled to equitable access to, to learning, opportunities for achievement, and the pursuit of excellence in all aspects of their educational programs. And whereas Dyslexia Awareness Month is an opportunity to, to raise awareness of dyslexia and show support for people with dyslexia. Where, therefore, be resolved that I, John D. Craig, Mayor of Eastern Charlotte and New Brunswick, do hereby do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Dyslexia Awareness Month, and October the 8th, 2025, as International Dyslexia Day in Eastern Charlotte. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Eastern Charlotte to be fixed the 17th day of September 2025. Correspondence, there is none tonight. Tonight is the public presentation, number 12, public presentation appearances. Please note under bylaw EC-01, section 7.1, members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. Please note, I'm asking for you to give your name and civic address when you come up to the microphone, and during this time, I can't tolerate or allow anybody to make accusations against anybody or on any subject that works for Eastern Charlotte, or any member of council, or anybody for that matter. So, yeah, if you'd like to speak, you just go over here to the microphone, and just tell me your name and address. Yeah.
Hope my time doesn't start now.
Chris, give him 30 seconds. Before you start. That's good.
I'll just rush through this, since I only have five minutes. Your worship, city council members, thank you for creating and developing Riverside Park. It's typing mistake there. Your foresight and vision are commendable. It was an effective way of repurposing the area. Many visitors staying at our Airbnb write in their reviews how they like sitting in the park, eating, and looking at the river and surrounding scenery. To enhance the appearance and appeal of the park, I'm recommending the town install three circular flower beds with a tree planted in the center, as you see in the picture that's attached. When looking at the river, two should be planted, could be planted, on the right of the pavilion and one to the left. Circular flower beds can be seen in the coastal link trail along the St. Croix River in St. Stephen. They're located across the street from the Gossillon Civic Center parking lot. One of them is 13 feet in diameter, the other 16 feet. These flower beds are beautiful and would look good in Riverview Park. I mentioned this suggestion to Jason Godet earlier this year, and his concern with the town does not have the staff to water and maintain the gardens. To alleviate his concern, my wife and I are willing to volunteer to do all the necessary upkeep of the flower beds. As some of you may know, we live right across the street, so right behind Riverside Park is where we, and so it wouldn't be much trouble for us to do that. The lawn, I also recommend installing another bench facing the river to provide additional seating option for visitors. The lawn at the park has some bare spots which should be seeded. A lot of the grass appears to have a yellowish-dry appearance. I suggest installing an in-ground sporkage system to provide a lush green appearance similar to a golf course. Our Airbnb guests have made many positive comments in their mandatory reviews, providing good publicity for the town in the Airbnb, Facebook, and TripAdvisor communities. They love, their words, quaint appearance of the town, the waterfall, and the pub. An exceptionally beautiful park would be another attraction for giving tourists a reason to visit and return. If improved, the park should be added to brochures promoting tourism. This town has made a sizable investment, among other things, in the large, well-designed pavilion, so some additional expenditures, such as flowers and green grass, will enhance the beauty as well as enjoyment of the park for future generations, as well as, for locals and visitors alike. The park will become truly special and memorable. The first picture you see there, that's what I recommend. I recommend a 16-foot flower bed with a deciduous tree instead of an evergreen tree, which I think would be nicer. The second picture shows the other two types of flower beds they have there, which are somewhat smaller. I submit to you that a circular flower bed is a more effective use of park space than a horizontal flower bed like they had in Dover Park in St. Stephen. I also spoke to Jen Dow, who's a horticulturalist of the town of St. Stephen, and she says she waters the plants three days a week and provides some, what do you call that, the, well, she puts in something like a fertilizer. Okay, so, so, thank you for your time. My wife and I sincerely hope the council will implement our recommendations.
Good, you still have a minute and a half, if you'd like to. You did a good job. Yeah, he's out of breath. Okay, next, anybody else like to go ahead? That was a good presentation.
Karen Kernigan from St. George. I'm gonna apologize before I start. Good evening, Mayor Craig and councilors. I would like to address the last month council meeting on August the 20th. There's three points. First thing, prior to this council meeting on August the 20th, I heard a rumor about some property. So the mayor and I were at a barbecue together on a Friday, and I asked if there was any truth to it. He told me he had, did not know anything about it, never heard a word about this. I come to the council meeting Wednesday, and it was on the agenda. Well, this didn't sit well with me. If I didn't, if he didn't want to discuss it with me, he should have said, it's, I can't talk about this, Karen, it will be on the agenda, and that would have been fine. Second, there were two ladies here from the Lions Club that got up to make a presentation, and the mayor said, you can sit down, I'll read what you want. It certainly made them uncomfortable, as well as us sitting here. As Mayor Craig gave all kinds of time to two previous ladies, as they couldn't get the computer going, and they waited for them. I would like to thank Counselor Lee for saying, I think these two ladies came prepared to present what they, what their need was, and so we should let them talk. The third thing was the agenda. We had all, had all been addressed. Everything had spoken, except closing remarks from Mayor Craig. Out of nowhere, the mayor suggested we stop working on becoming a town. It certainly surprised council, and us sitting in the room. My understanding, we were on a 90-day pause to get all the information, pros and cons of being a town, instead of a rural community. I've been to council meetings before, where Alexa has been turned down to make a motion because it wasn't on the agenda, but this was allowed at this meeting. I would say there's double standards. The council was so unprepared for this, it was like a bunch of chickens with their heads cut off. Mr. Mayor, if you had thought this through, as it was such a big decision, you would have waited for the whole council out of respect for the two wards that their councilors were unable to attend. Deputy Mayor Hat asked, shouldn't all council be here? You said no. Alexa wasn't sure what you were proposing, she was confused, which, as the rest of us were in the room, was confused in what was happening. You've told us for almost two years, we needed to be a town, with no information at all. All of a sudden, you put a halt on it. As a taxpayer, and other people here are taxpayers, I'm sure there's been a lot of money and effort and work put into this to try to become a town. I would assume the CAO and probably others have also worked on this tirelessly. I was told by a counselor, and it wasn't Adam Hat, it was another counselor, that he didn't receive a full package on pros and cons until after the meeting. So I would say council doesn't even have all the information yet. We, as the residents, deserved to be able to ask questions at a meeting we were promised. I know I'm not supposed to talk during a meeting, but as you dropped this bombshell at the very end, I tried to ask the question, and Mayor Craig, you told me I wasn't allowed. But it was so out of control, I thought that maybe if you would just listen to the question I was asking, then someone would have come to their senses and thought this through before voting on it. My mouth's getting dry. I would have, I would have been able to address this matter last month if the agenda had followed procedure. I now understand why people say, why bother coming to the council? Doesn't let you talk, and then they don't respond. We have an election coming up in May, if I am correct. I believe the next mayor and council need to address some of these reasons people don't come. We should be able to question decisions on the agenda, and if you don't have the answer right then, the next meeting answered the question with all the information needed. Being able to sit at the table and just hit the gavel and open the meeting and never have to address anything to the public is no way to represent the community. Then hit the gavel and close the meeting, no accountability. Next mayor, I hope, changes how the meetings are conducted and the information gets relayed to the community. I would like to say, I'm so disappointed in how Mayor Craig handled this meeting. Alexa, you represent St. George. I wish you would have stood firm when you questioned Mayor Craig and said, timeout. I realize that this is, this decision was made on the spur of the moment. Sometimes spur-of-the-moment decisions have regrets. I'm neither for or against becoming a town, but I would have at least liked it to have been informed properly. My understanding that all the information is ready to be presented to the community, so why not hold the meetings? I would suggest that someone from the province come down and explain everything to us. I would like one of the councilors to make this motion, that we hold these meetings and everybody get informed properly. One thing, I have been checking out pros and cons. One thing I have been told, by being a town, we are handling, if, one thing I understand by not being a town, we're handing more power over decision-making to the province, to the provincial government, instead of our local council. That is how I feel, sitting here from last month, and we elected yous to make decisions for us, and to get all the proper information before hitting the gavel and stopping things. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Anybody else like to come?
Matthew Hall, Ward Four. I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but I feel inspired. So, back in August, all the walking trails in town here got closed down. Nobody was allowed on them. So it led me to run sidewalks that I typically don't run with my son, pushing the stroller, and it made me very aware of the state, the poor state of a lot of them. So from Mill Brook Park in Blacks, down to Lewis Connors Drive, that section of sidewalk is really, it needs up, it needs fixed. It's really jagged, it's not this difficult to run with a stroller. It, like, I have good mobility. I can only imagine some of the older or less mobile people in the community, the struggles they would have walking on this section without tripping and falling. And then, secondly, I just want to ask you a question, or, just say a question. Why are we the only municipality in all of New Brunswick that continues to fight and argue about what we are? If we're a rural community, or if we're gonna be a municipality? No other community is putting this much thought, effort, and resources into challenging this and changing it. I don't understand this. Our resources can be used better elsewhere, in my opinion. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else? John, yeah, go right ahead, John.
Good evening, everybody. My name's John Calderon, I'm from Back Bay. I have a couple questions, but before I do so, I want to thank you all for any help that you have given me in the past for my annual motorcycle ride for muscular dystrophy. This year was our third year. We started in year one with 30 bikes and made about $1,500. Year two, we were up to 50 bikes and made about $1,800. This year here, we hit 70 and made over $2,700 for muscular dystrophy. I'll be coming to see you in the spring for more support, because this year, I'm hoping for 100. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your support, and anything you can do to help is greatly appreciated. All right, question time. I don't know much about the town thing or anything like that, but my questions are, if Eastern Charlotte becomes a town, I'd like for you guys, I guess, actually consider how you would go about bylaws as far as the rural areas? Like, I don't know, like, will there be more restrictions placed on rural areas as far as how we do things? Traditional generational hunting areas, will they be closed down from people to hunt? Like, I don't know, that's why I'm asking these questions, right? Because I know, like, some, there's towns where there's like zero hunting in-town limits, and I just wanna see if that stuff's gonna be okay, or are we gonna lose that? That's all I was wondering. And somebody did ask me to mention, the rural areas, if we do become a town, is there any big, anything that's gonna benefit us, like, or are we just gonna have higher taxes? I know that's a silly question, but it's one that was given to me, so I said I would pass it along. So, that's it for me. I just wondering about, you know, living a way of life out in the woods, that's all. All right, thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Great, thank you, John, thank you. Anybody else like to have an opportunity? Sam?
Sam Rubin, Mount Pleasant Road. And I'm gonna talk about Mount Pleasant Road just a little bit. As the officer said, school's back in. A real change in traffic and people moving around up there, a lot of traffic, a lot of people. I'm gonna start at the schools, crosswalk. Just before school, get out, the municipality, they installed step-down positions off the sidewalks, they needed a long time ago. But, the crosswalk sign was taken down and not put back up. And here it is, two and a half months later, school's already in. That needs to be rectified. They picked the sign up, it's gone somewhere. Now let's go up to the tennis court, 150 meters up the street. There's a crosswalk sign on one side of the road, the other one was hit by snow plowing, and there's no crosswalk on the pavement. Take the signs down if they don't need them. If the school wants it there, paint the crosswalk, put the other sign up. Go up the road another 150 meters, the other side of the RCMP barracks. There was a sign that fell down, probably about three and a half months ago. It was a 30-ahead sign, and it goes before the school zone starts, and then the crosswalk signs. That needs to be reinstalled, that needs to be put back up. It's a high volume of traffic, and every indication for these gentlemen to do their job, if those signs are all there, it makes it much easier for them to enforce it. Thank you very much.
Okay, going once? Three times, great. I'm gonna go, statements by members of council, I'm gonna go to the deputy mayor first.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, on such a lovely evening. Listening to the fire report and having read quite a bit on it in the last few days, somewhat alarmed by the increase in calls by our fire department doing medical coverage. I hope ambulance New Brunswick is not taking advantage of their goodwill and expertise and willing to serve, will to serve us, and downloading onto our fire department. And as Jason mentioned, come to the Pavilion Grand Opening, September 28th, four to seven, live music, free food, vendors. Hope to see you there.
Council Thompson.
The conversation around the town and rural community. This is what we know. We have a letter from the deputy minister from July of this year, that there is no change in transition funding from being a town or a rural community. We have a list from the Transition Committee, which I was part of. We have a list from the Transition Committee, which July was part of, is population-based, whether you're a village, town, or rural community. Now remember where we live. We're forty square kilometers, seventy-five hundred people, seventy-five to eighty percent of this area of Eastern Charlotte is rural. Blacks Harbor population under a thousand, St. George's population under a thousand. The majority of the population lives on the outside. What benefit do we have by going to be a town? The rural areas are not going to get the services that the town or the old village had. We will never see anything that they had. The minister has the final say of whatever we do at this table. We can make a bylaw, we can change the world that day, and he can step in the next morning and say, no, it's not going to be like that, and he'll make the decision. We need to stay the rural community. The majority of the people live on the outside. Thank you.
I've got to go to Counselor Hat at this point, because he's using the next one in line. Counselor Hat?
Yeah, I'll hopefully next month be at the meeting, and I'll get caught up by then.
Good. Counselor Dedrakis, you're next.
Sure. So the last council meeting, Mayor Craig had asked councils to consider a plebiscite during the next election. So that is at the next election, the residents of Eastern Charlotte would make the decision at the ballot whether or not we would stay as a rural community or become a town. But we don't know the cost. We don't know the cost of what it is to actually do a plebiscite, and from what I've heard through the grapevine, it could actually be pretty costly. It could be a major expense actually for our taxpayers. Meanwhile, this whole conversation, this whole debate about being a town versus rural community has created quite a bit of tension, distrust, and some would say that it's actually turned into a distraction from the real priorities that we should be focused on. So like childcare, like the water situation in Blacks Harbor, you know, building a stronger partnership with our provincial leaders, right? So right now, if you do follow social media, it seems that Eastern Charlotte is the only municipality in southwest New Brunswick that hasn't sat down with the minister to talk about issues, key issues, like economic development, local governance, even our roads, okay? I want to thank CHCO, because someone from the minister's office saw their article and forwarded these facts that we now know, which is, changing our status does not affect our funding, our planning powers, or the services we provide. So the bottom line is, a vote will cost you money that we don't need to spend, okay? We can keep chasing distractions, or we can put our energy back to where it belongs, which is serving our constituents in Eastern Charlotte. So some of the questions, I'm trying to, I've tried to write down everything that all the, that everyone, Karen, John, and Sam, what you mentioned. Karen, you had said, I missed. Yeah, so this is a question that could address both Karen and John. John, like you mentioned, how does our designation change rural life? That's, oh, he's not here, okay. So how does it change our rural life? And that's a really good question. That's a question that we could ask the minister. I've wanted the minister or someone from local governance to come and, you know, talk to the public and actually give a breakdown, a presentation on the differences between, you know, town, rural community, village. We still haven't gotten anything back from that. So that's my answer for that one. And I made, in terms of Karen, you asked of why I voted to go in this. The question, so that what we voted on wasn't for the plebiscite, it was for, the motion that Terry, Counselor Lee put forward was a decision to stop it entirely. At that point, it had been, I think, sixty days, has it been sixty days? And at that point, it had been a month into having this letter from the minister's office about the breakdown of, sorry, the clarification on what are, what changing our designation means really, which is, like I mentioned, it doesn't impact our funding, it doesn't necessarily impact our planning powers or the services we provide. So that's why with that information, I voted according to that. And that's something we really, part of good governance is still having that information, though. Like, it's good for all of us to know what that really means. So hopefully, one day, we can get that information, and we can get that presentation from local governance. That's it.
Great, thank you. Counselor McCrory. Counselor Tid.
I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. In regards to the town versus rural community, I guess I still have questions in my mind. Initially, we thought there was a funding issue, and I guess my main concern still today is, and I don't think we've ever been given a clear answer, depending on who you asked and what time of day it is, into the bylaws, like the municipal plan versus a rural plan, where does the decision-making power lie? My understanding, with the municipal plan, it lies more around this table. With a rural plan, it relies more with the province. But it kind of contradicts each other because the province already can overrule a plan, even if we're a town. So really, that's a non-starter for me. So I agree, I think it's a lot of waste of energy around this table, to be quite honest, when we have bigger fish to fry, so to speak. That's all I'll say on that. I would like to also, I think Fred's gone, Fred Stewart, I would like to thank him for his presentation, and I'd also like to thank the volunteers. If you haven't been over to Beaver Harbor lately, go take a look at the ball field. The amount of work that's been done on that field in the last month is just phenomenal. I believe it's, most of those pictures, you can actually, if you don't go over, you can take a look at the Beaver Harbor Community Facebook page, and it's all there, so thanks again.
Sorry, Counselor McCabe?
Okay, I have a couple of things. So most of you may have noticed that the mural in the town has been painted over. So and as it was being painted over, I put a post on about it being painted over. Well, there's been a lot of comments. So, let's address some of those comments. This was, this was a team decision. This was a council decision. And I get that not everybody is going to be pleased with council decisions, but we are your council, and we are trying to do the very best that we possibly can for our community. So people have come out of the woodwork and said they didn't like the mural, they don't like the, or they did like the mural, sorry, and we shouldn't be covering it over. Well, the mural has been there since 2017, and it has seen better days. The shingles are rough, the paint is chipping, and in my personal opinion, it looked bad. So, and then there was a comment made about the artist, that the artist, you know, would be hurt, or some sort of, something like that, that his feelings may be hurt. Well, the artist is a grown man, and he's an artist, and artists know that not everybody appreciates their work. If you're an artist, you know that, you know, your work is either liked by some and not liked by some. So I'm sure the artist has broad shoulders. However, the artist was called in 2022 or addressed in 2022, and his comment was, it has, it lasted five years, I didn't even think it would last that long, so this had been seven years or whatever. So the artist is okay with it. The other thing was that the money could be better spent. Well, if somebody or people had read my post better, this was volunteer work by your council. Nobody was paid, there was not really any cost incurred except for maybe five gallons of paint, and there was actually a couple gallons left over. So there was no cost. So as far as putting that money somewhere else, there was no money. So your council volunteered their time to go and paint a building that doesn't belong to us, just to make it look better. So other people have said, is there going to be another mural put on? Well, we're not making a decision on that. In order to paint a mural with paint, other than spray paint, it would have to be sheathed, and it would have to be a flat surface. Once again, we do not own the building. So those are just my comments on all of that. I think the building looks great now that it's painted. It's a lovely color. I don't know who picked out the color, was it you, Jason? Somebody from Public Works picked out the color, and they did a fabulous job. So that's that. Now my comments concerning Karen's comments about the council meeting. I was a council member, or we all council members, but nobody on this council knew what was going to happen that night, and it was obvious on our faces, I'm sure. I was privy to some information that something was going to happen, but I had no idea what it was. Do I think it was done appropriately? No, I do not, and I will speak up boldly, and I will say, I do not. As far as I'm concerned, I do believe our mayor owes council a public apology for what he has done to council by not letting any of us know. We were blindsided, and none of us knew what was happening. And to go to a member of the public and decide this, that this was going to take place, and that member of public come here, it was not right. And I will stand behind that statement, and we'll go from there. Thank you all for coming out. It's been a great night.
Okay, that brings us to the date and location of our next regular meeting of council, and that's October the fifteenth, 2025, at seven o'clock right here in McAdieby Place. I'll look for a motion for adjournment. Hey, Counselor Tid, thank you. Thank you.